Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the January 14th, 2020, school board meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. McDougall?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
Typically, we move into our moment of silence, but before we do so, we have a new face up here with us this evening, and so I would like to introduce and welcome Mr. Paul Gibbs, our new general counsel, who has joined us, I think, seven days he has been on the job. Joined us first day after the break, and so this is his first night joining us here in a board meeting, and we are very thankful that he has chosen to be here and looking forward to the great work that he's going to do. So if you would give me some applause for Mr. Gibbs and joining us. Mr. Gibbs, anything you would like to say?
Just to thank you, and I'm excited to be here, and it's like drinking water through a fire hose right now.
I know everyone is surprised to hear that. All right. At this moment, or at this time, the Board will hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of one of our BPS family members who recently passed away. Sophia Nelson, a sixth grade student from Surfside Elementary School. We invite you to join us. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead the pledge of allegiance for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that what they're here for? Doing your recognition. Okay. At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community that have joined us this evening, or that are either with us this evening, or they would like to recognize since our last gathering. Who wants to start? Ms. McDougall, you want to go, or Ms. Campbell?
I'm ready.
You're ready?
You go ahead, Ms. Campbell. Sorry. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties down here. I was able to go last week with my daughter to the Florida Music Educators Association Conference. It's an annual conference that the music teachers from around the state come to, and I just wanted to brag on some BPS people. Oak Alley High School's orchestra was invited to attend. It's a great privilege for individual groups to get to come and perform, and they have to submit those auditions ahead of time. Because of the way the schedule, I actually missed the concert. I was so sad, but what I did not miss was walking into the room and hearing some people from, some leaders from the Florida Orchestra Association gushing, literally gushing over the performance by the students from Oak Alley High School. They were just amazed. They were encouraging the students to, you know, share the story of their journey toward their performance. I mean, it was amazing. So I'm super proud of the way they represented their school and our school district, and thank you to Eric Bryan for being such a fabulous orchestra director. Of course, Dr. Chad Kirk from Mel Hi was recognized as their Administrator of the Year. We've announced that before, but that was great to see, be a part of that as well. If I counted correctly, we had around 112 BPS students who were part of an all-state group, whether that was one of the orchestras, or the choirs, or the bands, or even the elementary school festivals, the orchestra groups. We had over 112, over 110, I know for sure, BPS students who are part of an all-state group. So I'm really proud of the work that they've done, the teachers who got them to that level. It's an amazing experience to get to listen to them perform. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to Dan Jankowski for some work that he did really quickly. Cindy Johnson, who is our music resource teacher, was, part of the weekend is an opportunity for music coordinators from around the district to recruit teachers, because college students who are music majors come and attend the conference as well. And she just tossed out an idea, and he ran with it, and between Monday and Wednesday, he created a flip book for her, did a little QR code, so that when she came up to a prospective employee, she could say, "Here, scan this QR code and learn all about our district and why Brevard is a great place to come and be a music teacher." And so I just want to shout out to him, thank you for working across teams to make that happen for her. She was real excited about it. So it was a great weekend. And just one quick other thing, and that is the city of Palm Bay is organizing a STEAM Day. I don't know if it has a title yet, but we have a prospective date in November, and really excited to see they're going to be, wanting to partner with the school district in just communicating that. They're going to get business organizations and all our wonderful engineering firms to have a hand in having a great day for our public and for our students, and encouraging students to head in the STEAM, into STEAM areas, and I'll be sharing some more about that later.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I did, I want to echo some of the same sentiments about our new addition, Mr. Gibbs. I think that he is definitely learning as fast as he can about us culturally, but he comes from a wealth of knowledge and in-depth in his field. And I did want to tell you guys that one of the first things I did that I saw inside of him as a person is that he has three kids. He has a wife who's a teacher, and his head is wrapped around education, and he cares for the kids. And one of the first things that I told him when he came on was, he said, we started talking, and I said, "The first thing that I would love to have you do is restructure our expulsion system." Because we have a lot of stuff that goes on, parents that are arguing points that aren't prudent of to what we're trying to do, we have staff being berated inside these meetings, and it's just got to end. Like, it's just got to stop. That our staff has wasted time in an expulsion hearing for half of a day, and also being berated by these parents over issues that don't even, we can't even judge, because it's a quasi judicial hearing, we don't even have the right to change some of the stuff that's going on. So he said that he's had much success in Marion County where he's from, and that he looks forward to doing that. And I think after our first expulsion hearing today, he kind of was agreeing that there's some good things that we can do, and I look forward to seeing him with that. But I did, Mr. Gibbs, want to say that this is a great opportunity for us, and we want to welcome you aboard, and we're honored to have you. And I look forward to when your kids come down, those FTE dollars that we get next year, along with your wife being a great teacher. We know the guy that can make some of the hiring happen here, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's one. Right?
You get another half.
No, no, look, see all this right here?
No, a half.
No, I'm recognizing you. Next one is, I wanted to take a minute, we have Who We Play For here. You guys had an amazing fundraiser that you had, both at the restaurant where you guys gave out awards, and I think they brought the awards that you guys were supposed to get if you would have been able to. But the next day, I got to play golf, and I went out there and played golf at their golf outing, and there are some really, I thought, man, I brought the guy that literally set the course record there for four straight years, played golf there from seventh grade to twelfth grade at Cocoa Beach High School, went on to college. He has pictures on the wall. I was like, "We're going to win this thing." I was talking trash to Evan the whole time, and then we ended up in like fifth place. So anyways, I wanted to say thank you for having me out. Thank you for what you guys do for our school system. Thank you for saving our kids' lives. And I wanted to give you guys an opportunity now, that if you wanted to do what you were going to do prior to, is this the right time to do this, or would you rather do that in a minute? Madam Chair.
No, that's fine. You can go ahead.
Did you guys want to come up real quick and do what you were going to do? Still half, by the way.
Still half.
Well, I guess I'm going to be doing the speaking first. You notice it's always age before beauty, right?
Well, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Who We Play For, and also on behalf of the staff, we just want to thank you guys as champions of the year for heart health. Brevard County is the first county of its size in the country to make this a requirement for their student athletes, and I'm telling you, you guys have been watched. Cocoa Beach, Cape Canaveral, and Brevard County are on the map now nationally for what's being done here. So kudos to you, hats off to you. Want to say thank you, and also, you know, it's just, the process was fun to go through, and you guys are just a bunch of great people, and the staff did a great job too. So we want to give these awards out, but I want to let Evan and Sean say a word as well.
Mr. Susan, one mistake you made in the golf tournament is the four teams that beat you, I'm sure cheated and paid for mulligans. We sell mulligans. I don't know if we offered them to you, though.
I didn't take a mulligan, but...
You didn't take a mulligan. Wow, that's a game changer.
Should have known that.
In the spirit of getting this going, so everyone can finish their meeting, again, thank you so much on behalf of so many families of Brevard. Just since June, we've had 10 kids have surgery to potentially save their lives, and the data that we're collecting right now, it's no exaggeration, is standard of care changing. So on behalf of all of us, to you guys, to Mr. Maharris, to Ms. Moore, to Mr. Langford, and so many more, we thank you to the end of time, and I'll give it to the beautiful ball guy.
Yeah, I just echo what Evan said. Thank you all very much. It's really hard to believe how far we've come in the last few years, but, you know, I tell everybody whenever I talk that Brevard County is definitely the safest school district in the entire country, and that's because of you all and taking the time to listen and really caring about our students. And it's an honor and a pleasure to live in this county, and again, thank you so much.
Mr. Seema, how many, you donate your time to do these screenings, right? You don't get paid for it. How many screenings do you think you've done over the last couple of years, if you could total them out? I mean, individuals, not actual screenings, but individuals.
I don't know, thousands?
It's amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Well, you know the story of my daughter.
I know, I know.
This is give it back time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You guys wanted, hang on, did you guys, you had awards for the school board, Dr. Mullins, who else?
Mr. Langford, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Maharris, is Mr. Maharris here? If you guys will come up, I think they want to get a picture, so.
Is Mr. Langford here this evening?
You better go down there. You got to go down there, Dr. Mullins. You guys, get the award, you go down there.
We're going.
Mr. Gibbs, you can take the picture with us. This is a big pain in the butt for you.
You guys got to take them out of the plastic.
Thank you.
Don't tell me that. I even went out and bought new gloves.
She said she's going to do it. She said stall. I'm okay. I got to keep going. All right, so our IT has told me to stall as long as I can, because they don't have me logged in, so I have a couple of other things that I'm going to cover.
I'm going to overrule Jackie on that, Mr. Susan.
Anyways, the other one that I wanted to do is say a successful rally for our BFT members up in Tallahassee. You guys were amazing. You guys went up there, you took it, and a lot of positiveness came back. I didn't get any of, you guys didn't corner and tar and feather any of our legislators up there, so I was happy about that report, and everything seemed to be a well-oiled operation. So I wanted to say congratulations. You guys made the front page of the Florida Today today, I think, too, so good job to that. Want me to keep going? Pre-K teachers are going to come, giving me the really bad look right now? Okay, all right, I'll just bring them up later on.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Nah, it's okay.
I'm just kidding, go ahead, Matt.
So we did goggles the other day, right? And we were in the room, and we were looking at virtual image of that area, and one of you guys said, "Why don't we do this with the zoo?" So I called them, and they said they are excited to do it. So our IT team is going to get with the zoo, and they're actually going to do virtual pictures of inside the habitats, and then they're going to use those in our Title I schools with those goggles, so the kids can further their education of the zoo schools and other things while they're on-site at the schools. And I thought that was so cool, and just in conversation, Miami Dade Zoo wants to do it, and then one of the teachers said, "Could we do other ones?" So there's becoming this virtual platform where they may go to St. Augustine and do some sites, they may go do the zoo and do sites, and they may, all out of us, doing a little goggles in a back room here, so that was cool. So I wanted to say congratulations for that.
Good job, Mr. Susan. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Do you have more? I wasn't cutting you off.
No, they're all for the end of the meeting, though. No, that's okay. I was literally trying to stall for this thing. I don't know what's going on, but...
Yeah, we've still, we've still got the rest. Ms. Duskovich, would you like to do your recognitions while we work on the technical issue?
Sure, I just have one. Well, it's one event, but lots of people to thank for, it seems like a long time ago now, but our holiday breakfast here at the education facility. I don't even know how many people we had in this room. It was opened up all the way through the back, but hundreds easily. It's a big undertaking, and so the team that worked hard to put that together, the decorations are beautiful, the food was excellent. Thank you Food Services Facilities for setting that up and taking that down. It's no small task. And to our own Ms. Campbell, who serenaded us. We, no, it wasn't "We wish you a merry," "Have yourself a merry little Christmas," I think it was. We had an excellent holiday event, and again, thanks to all that worked on that.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Ms. McDougall?
I just have one thing to remind some of our schools if they want to participate in the recycling awards program that originally was originally created by the League of Women Voters, but it's changed hands now, and so there is a deadline if you want to become one of the, win the recycling award program, and there's a school application online. The application's due by January 24th, and, I mean, applications are due by January 24th, and the early submission, and entry submissions are due by April 20th. So I know some of our schools have won these awards in the past, and I just want to make sure that if you're interested, the deadline is fast approaching. And they really do this to really have our students as a science, it kind of coordinates with our science, and about how we can be more energy efficient and less waste in our schools and in our homes. So I just thought a little shout out to remind our schools that this is available if you want to participate. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Just wanted to highlight Saturday evening, the Brevard County Sheriff's Office hosted their fourth annual Public Service Awards and Hall of Fame Ceremony. It was a wonderful evening, and what was particularly impressive is we had 18 different Brevard schools' connected individuals recognize that evening for a host of recognitions. Law enforcement, military, community champions. We had teachers recognize SRO, administrators, media specialists, guidance counselor, our support staff from district security. And what's notable is that these 18 individuals were not nominated by just the district office. They were nominated by community folks across our district. So just a great representation of the great community heroes that we have in our schools that ultimately make our school, or our district, just a great place to live. So wanted to give a shout out to them. At this moment, this evening, Rockledge High School is hosting the Infinite Scholars Fair, which has been coordinated by Michael Kador for, I think this is the third or fourth year. Last year, more than $5 million was awarded to Brevard County students in college scholarships, and it's just become a great partnership, and want to do a shout out to Michael Kador as a community leader for his efforts to make that happen. Interestingly, the Super Bowl festivities are going to include our Melbourne High School's culinary students, as they were chosen to assist celebrity chefs at the Taste of the NFL in Miami on February 1st. It's a very prestigious and charitable event with celebrity chefs, NFL players, and thousands of attendees, and Chef Michael and his culinary students are going to be representing us there in Miami.
We have any complimentary tickets to that?
Do they need shopping?
I haven't heard yet. I put in a request.
Gibbs, isn't there some rule it says that we have to follow?
You can't accept gifts over $100.
But that's not a gift if it's complimentary and we're helping our kids. Chaperoning is not gifting, Gibbs. Gosh, did we hire this guy?
And last, but certainly not least, Madison Middle School's vocal ensemble, and again, a shout out to our music programs. Chorus teacher Meg McGivney, who was recognized Saturday evening at the Public Service Awards, will be performing at the Disney Springs on February 21st, 6:15. This group of young women has been volunteering and performing in the community throughout the year in hopes of raising funds for the trip, and their upcoming fundraising events include El Leon Cito, El Leon City in Titusville. El Leon's...
El Leon Cito.
Thank you, thank you.
We got one right around here, too. It's really good.
Yeah, yeah. From 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, a portion of the money raised or spent at the restaurant will go to the chorus, Main Street Philly on January 20th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and Village Inn on February 6th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. So last year, their efforts across the community funded the entire trip. Another shout out to our community for supporting our amazing music programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I have just a couple. Prior to the winter break, several of us attended the adult education graduation at Clear Lake, and this one was a really exciting graduation. I know that I always harp on how awesome the adult ed graduations are, because they, they're just very different than any of our other graduations. Not that all of them are not absolutely worthy of celebrating, but the adult ed graduations just have a completely different feel to them. It's a much more personal connection. We hear lots of stories from students, and this time, we were graduating some of their apprenticeship students as well for the very first time, so that was very, very exciting. There's usually like singing and dancing, and they, every student that graduates through our adult ed program actually gets a free class at Eastern Florida State College, and as they cross the stage, Mr. Arnott asks every single one of them, "What is your next step?" And so they're already getting them thinking about and committing to a future, so really exciting, and many thanks to all of the adult ed team that helps their students to be successful to cross that stage. It's very evident in the feedback from the students that that team is really a phenomenal team that comes together in support of the students. And so congratulations to all of those graduates, and thank you to the team that helps to make it happen. Speaking of graduation, our team here at Brevard Public Schools, as you all know, we have celebrated that our graduation rate has been increasing for some time now, and that is absolutely due to the hard work of our teachers and our support staff, and our guidance counselors, and social workers, and all of the people that are supporting our students to get to that success rate. But a couple of years ago, we changed our approach a little bit and stopped looking only at our graduation rate and started really digging into our subgroup data to identify how are our special needs students doing, how are our English language learners doing, how are our various demographic subgroup students doing? And our team has been doing some phenomenal work in that area, allowing us to identify where we need to put additional support. So it's not just our overall graduation rate increasing, but setting goals for every single subgroup of students to be increasing as well. And based on that, I have to give a huge shout out to our leading learning team and all of the principals and the data dives that they have been doing, but I have to give a special shout out to Astronaut High School, who we have recently gotten their graduation subgroup information, and Astronaut High School increased their graduation rate in every single subgroup this year. So kudos to them, because that is pretty cool. And then the last thing that I will share, and this is for those of you who have not been with us all day today, we had a phenomenal presentation by Sue Han earlier regarding the use of our sales surtax revenues and some of our facility assessments that are going on, and I would encourage all of you, if you did not have the opportunity to get that information, you can get all of the documents on our agenda site, and the workshop video will be available for you to watch, but there was some really great information in there about the importance of our facilities in addition to the importance of our instruction and how our facilities impact student achievement and faculty and staff morale, and how we are facing some tough choices with regard to facilities in Brevard County, but how we're also, Ms. Han and her team are working with actually all of the teams here at Brevard Public Schools to really put together a plan going forward as to what we need to do to ensure that we can have great facilities for our students. So Ms. Han, thank you for you, all of your work and the work of your team, and making such great use of our sales surtax funds, and also making sure that we have the data necessary to look at what are the challenges that we face going forward. So we appreciate you, and I encourage all of you to check out that workshop if you didn't get a chance to catch it, including Mr. Rogers. Eric Rogers with Florida Today wasn't able to be with us for the workshop, but I had asked him to please make sure that he takes a look at it, so we can share that information with our community as well.
Yes, I forgot, can I make one little advertisement for all county concerts?
Yes, Ms. Campbell, please feel free to go ahead and make an advertisement.
Sorry, because I just realized that our next board meeting will be after this is over, but not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, January 25th, is the day for our all-county concerts. So if you want to just come and just be soaking in great music, I encourage you to get tickets to one of our all-county concerts, our all-county chorus, all-county orchestra, and then the band concert in the evening. So they're wonderful groups to get to participate in, and so I think you can maybe find those online or call. Yeah, tickets are free, so make sure that you get your ticket, because it's going to be some, a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, 22 consent items, two action items, and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A, seven on administrative staff recommendations, receive revisions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Any discussion?
Ms. Belford, I'm sorry, I need to strike that there is a presentation. There is no presentation tonight.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Motion's still okay to stand, Mr. Gibbs, with the amendment to the...
Yes. Yes, if there's no change in the actual agenda, he just misvotes.
Okay. So I have a motion for Mr. Susan, and a second for Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. I hate to say this.
Maybe easier than...
I'm afraid to click.
Oh, there you go.
Where?
Is it in the item or is it on the main screen?
Vote.
Oh, I see.
All I see is that I'm not voted.
Now, bear with us, we have transitioned to a new platform for agendas, and this is our first actual live run with the agenda, so.
I think I did it.
It popped up in the action box.
How come mine didn't say no actions available?
Well, I already voted, but it went away before I could write down the...
Mine went away, too.
Mine did, too.
That's where I recognized you from. He's the guy with the computer.
Oh, but they can see it?
Remember?
Oh, from the presentation. I was like, "Why is this gentleman up here with us?"
And then I remember now.
He's from the company.
But will it show here, so I can call the...
Did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good.
So Pam will be able to see.
You're very good.
But I can't see it. Nobody else can see it?
But I can't see it. Nobody else can see it?
Okay. So, Pam, if you, it sounds like I'm not going to be able to see the actual outcome of the vote, but I think we probably need to have it for the audio of the meetings, and I need to know that everyone has voted before I move on. So, when we have a completed vote, can you just let me know the outcome of the vote, and then I'll know to move to the next item? You don't see the vote?
I do not. Y'all can tell us how it came out.
Can they see it?
They can.
Oh, wait, I have it. I've got it. I've got voting results. The motion passed 5-0.
Yay!
Okay.
So, it just came up.
Here we go.
How did it come up, though?
It pops up on the right. You see there?
Looks official. This is nice.
Who did it to make it do that?
Simple majority.
Oh, I see.
It's a simple majority.
Major majority.
Votes, click on votes.
It's not showing on the screen anymore.
Click on votes. I got votes here. Matt Susan's high.
Yeah, it was there, so.
But I want to know who voted where.
We can, we can work through it.
We got this.
Okay. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Ms. Belford and board members, there are four persons on this item in the agenda for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell, I believe. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
Did it come up yet?
It has not come up yet.
Okay, just checking.
That's a whole lot of info.
Oh, I see. It flashes up and then it goes away. And then it pops back up. It's really slow. It's 5 to 0.
So, the motion passed 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
All right, at this time, I would like to welcome and recognize Ms. Mary Myers on her reclassification from the position of Assistant Principal at Columbia Elementary School to the position of Principal at Riviera Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Myers.
Wow, that's impressive.
Wow, I don't know that we've had that kind of fan club.
No.
Thank you.
Let's read that again.
Not sure I can follow that. Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and members of the school board. I would also like to thank Mrs. Klein and the team in elementary leading and learning for this opportunity, especially thankful for my mentors and former principals, Ms. Roberts, Principal at Columbia, and Dr. Miller, retired principal from Saturn, and now the Director of Transportation. Thank you for your support. I have with me this evening my family, my husband David, my daughter Rowan, my mom Margie, and my, who's crying? She's going to make me cry. I haven't cried at all until I saw her, and my stepfather Bobby. I would like to thank them for their flexibility and patience as I embark on this journey. It is an honor to join the Riviera team and become a manatee, and I am excited to work with the entire school community and ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to be successful at Riviera. Thank you.
All right. Team Myers set the bar high for the other candidates now, so.
Wow. We just have her come to every meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
You guys are welcome to come to every meeting, all right? Just keep this thing going. We'll just, we'll make up, we'll give you a different appointment with the same school over and over again. Guys can just come, and it'll be fun.
All right. Congratulations also go out to Dr. Latasha Bowens on her appointment to the position of Principal at Madison Middle School. Dr. Bowens comes to us from Ponte Verde, Florida, where she was an Assistant Principal. Congratulations, Dr. Bowens.
Wow. Oh, my God. I am so excited about being a part of the Brevard Public School family, and I am even more excited about being the new principal at Madison. These people are wonderful. I would call some names, but I am still learning names. Dr. Sullivan and everyone who has reached out to me, I've already fallen in love with this group of people. I, I am so thankful to you. I brought my mom with me and my aunt. These are the matriarchs of my family, and it means so much for them to be here tonight. And then the rest of my family is here tonight, and, and my new family is here tonight, and I feel so blessed to be a part of this team. Thank you for welcoming me. I've gotten so many emails already. I feel like I have, I don't know, I'm just like, oh, God, I'm just so overwhelmed with the right decision I made to be a part of this family. Thank you so much for inviting me. Board members, thank you so much for this opportunity. I look forward to serving the community and connecting with all of you very soon. So, I hope to meet everybody. If you haven't met me yet, I'm a hugger. I love people. So, I'm letting you know right now. I'm looking forward to being a part of the family. Thank you so much.
All right, one more. We congratulate Mr. Tony Harris on his reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Heritage High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Magnet High School. Go Pirates.
All right, all right. I didn't bring my fan club with me tonight, but to everyone who clapped for me, thank you, guys. I am beyond excited to be able to serve the community of Palm Bay Magnet High School, the students and the staff. I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Mullins for the appointment. I'd like to thank Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Harris for their recommendations. Dr. Harris for being a phenomenal mentor, principal, and professor. I have gotten many growth opportunities from him. Some of them I asked for, some of them I did not, but it made me a well-rounded educator, I believe. And I'd like to thank my new principal, Mr. Judd Kaminsky, for bringing me on board. I'm so excited to be a pirate. I'm ready for work tomorrow. Packed and ready to go. I would like to thank my parents. My dad's here. My mom couldn't make it. She's at work. But my, my father for making it. I appreciate you for always having my back. I'd like to thank the rest of my team at Heritage High School. I've learned so much from every single one of them. I really feel blessed to have come up under the administrators I did, Lucian Melendez, Dr. Dotson, Vivi Fendersen, Stephen Link, Chris Browning. All of them were just awesome to learn from. And then, last but not least, my better half, my wife Kyla, amazing woman, supports me in everything. Me, Bryson, and Janessa are just so lucky to have you. And thanks again to the board. I appreciate the opportunity, and go Pirates.
Okay, we are now at public comments. Typically, we go straight into public comment. I don't know if you all are welcome to stay with us for the remainder of the meeting, but if you would like for us to take a little breather, so that you can get back to your, your important
If you click on here or votes, you should be able to see what was voted. I mean, how many.
I can, I can see it, but it's not, see, that's the approval of the agenda. I can't So, but if you can just let me know when you see it, you can just state the motion passed 5-0, and then I'll move on. It's fine.
It should all pop up there just every time.
It should.
Are you here for a little while?
Okay, as they are exiting, and we're still continuing to work through some of our technical difficulties, we appreciate your patient, patience. We are now at public comments. The school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes. The portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment. The policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have five speakers scheduled for this evening, so we will not need to vote on an extension. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with the first three speakers, Vanessa Skipper, Anthony Calucci, and Kyle Savage. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing.
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, Brevard Federation of Teachers. Yesterday was truly an awesome day for public education in Florida. I could not have been prouder of the delegation that represented Brevard. The excitement, enthusiasm, and passion was invigorating. I want to thank all of Brevard's educators and public education supporters who took a personal day, showed up to bus stops between 6:00 and 6:15 a.m., traveled all the way to Tallahassee, marched on the Capitol, cheered, chanted, and let their voices be heard for our students. I want people at home and in the community to know that they took a personal day to do this, a personal day that will now be one less day that they can cash in over the summer or when they retire, to fiercely advocate for their students, their classrooms, and their profession. I'd also like to give a huge shout out to Sue Han for her helping to coordinate our bus stops. Because of her willingness to collaborate with BFT and Parks and Rec, we were able to have safe and legal parking for our participants. In addition, I'd like to thank everyone who stepped in to sub for a teacher who participated. I heard from Dr. Mullins' teacher that he was in automotive, from Ms. McDougall and Ms. Belford in elementary, Mr. Susan taught Spanish, and Ms. Campbell taught English. So, welcome. I know, Ms. Duskovich, you couldn't make it for personal reasons, but we'll have other opportunities. Don't worry. This is another example of how great things can be when we actually work together. And the one thing that we need to keep going is the momentum that we saw in Tallahassee. We can't just stop with one day. Tallahassee Police Department estimated 15,000 at the Capitol yesterday. We need everybody in this room, everybody at home watching, to make sure that they are doing something every single day for the next 60 days of the legislative session. We need them to contact their legislators. We need them to tag them on Facebook, tweet them. You can go to feaweb.org, do find your legislators, type in your address, and it'll get you the contact information for your person. We need everyone to share how our students, our classrooms, our schools, and our profession will benefit from being in the top 10 states to fund education, not the bottom 10. We're 43rd in the nation, and that's an embarrassment. And anybody in this room that is not going to contact a legislator and tell them that that's an embarrassment and we should be doing better should be ashamed of themselves. We must rise up collectively together. We can't make what happened yesterday be a one-hit wonder. We must continue to build activism that pressures lawmakers to do right by our public schools. Lawmakers on both sides of the aisle are saying the right things, but if we do not continue to do the hard work, we will miss this opportunity to bring real funding and a real improvement to our public schools, our students, and our educators' lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper, and thank you for all of your work and advocacy.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. First of all, thank you to the board, superintendent, and district staff for your support of the Take on Tallahassee rally, which happened yesterday. We believe that a clear message was sent to the state legislature and governor about the abysmal level of funding for public education, the overstep of state control, flawed laws, and what needs to be done to correct these issues. This will not be a one-and-done effort. We will sustain our advocacy. Along with the Orange County Teachers Union and other local unions, we have another rally planned for Saturday, February 15th, in central Florida. I hope you will join us at that rally. I believe that a big reason why the rally occurred without a hitch in Brevard was because BFT was transparent with the district about, about our intentions from day one. When organizations are transparent with their stakeholders, these organizations gain the trust of those they serve. Tonight, I'm requesting that the district change a practice that completely lacks transparency. To get right to the point, I'm requesting that this board advertise its off-site meetings and post the agenda for these meetings on the district website, just like they do every other meeting. For whatever reason, the current practice exists, it does nothing but cast suspicion on this board. I understand that this board is advertising these meetings according to the law by placing an ad in the Weekly Eagle. However, I've lived in Brevard County for 20 years and have never seen this newspaper anywhere. I've learned that the newspaper can be searched for electronically, but it's not transparent for citizens to have to regularly search ads online to know of meetings, especially when other meetings are advertised on your website. As president of the union, a teacher, and taxpayer, I do not believe I should have to puzzle together info to know when this board is meeting, where it's meeting, and what it's discussing. This lack of transparency can easily be fixed, and I'm requesting that off-site meetings are advertised as all the other meetings are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Mr. Savage.
Kyle Savage, the Treasurer of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I did meet in last fall with Dr. Mullins. He asked what can be done outside of teacher compensation. Pay's important, but I respected that question. Dr. Mullins and members of the boards, I think it's time that we move forward to offer our teachers and your employees paid maternity leave. Yesterday, 15,000 teachers marched on Tallahassee to let education stakeholders know it's time for a decade of change in education. It is time for everyone in this room, as a local education stakeholder, as a leader, to stand up for a decade of change. One thing I learned from my military career is that the most effective leaders lead from the front. Let's lead from the front in Brevard on this issue. Since I have started teaching, I've often, I have often wondered, in a female-dominated profession, why don't we treat our pregnant teachers better, our expectant mothers better, our new families better? I will be honest, I came into this conversation about maternity leave and paid maternity leave without a lot of knowledge on the issue. However, however, over the last few months, I've started to research maternity leave and the process that our teachers go through while being an expectant mother. It's unacceptable. I've heard dozens of horror stories from BPS teachers about the process and lack of benefit knowledge and lack of benefits provided to them throughout the maternity leave process. While no one person is responsible for this problem, let's work together as a team and solve this issue. This, the timeframe that a teacher, or any employee becomes a mother, should be a happy pro, should be the happiest time of their life, not a process that involves an enormous amount of stress. While it is true that BPS offers short-term disability for teachers that pay into it, and other benefits for employees having a child, these benefits fall very short of where they should be in the year 2020. It is time for BPS to offer paid maternity leave for its employees. Many of Brevard's largest employees offer some form of paid maternity leave. The military has been offering it for over 10 years. I took advantage of it as a father when I, while I was in. NASA, Harris, SpaceX, Bowen, all offer some form of paid maternity leave. I understand there will be costs associated with this program, but I think there is a way to work reasonable to determine the cost and create a plan that works for everybody. The Brevard Federation of Teachers looks forward to working with the district and all stakeholders to find a workable solution. When we look at paid maternity leave from a teacher, retention, and recruitment, this is a no-brainer. But beyond that, when we look at it from a human being, from one person to another, we should treat our expectant mothers as best as we can. As educators, we know the value of a family, and we all know it starts from the day of birth, not when they enter kindergarten. Thank you for your time, and I really do look forward to working with everybody on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Next, we have Kathy West, and then Frank Chong. Next, we have Kathy West, and then Frank Chong. Ms. West?
How y'all doing today? My name is Kathy West. I am a substitute teacher, and I'm here on behalf of the subs that I work with. We're still looking for our raises. We haven't gotten them yet. I know you guys are working on it. Also, I wanted to mention seeing if you guys could lower, get the testing fees lower some more, so that people that want to take the subject area tests are able to take the subject area test without having to scramble and struggle to get the monies up. I also went to the rally yesterday in Tallahassee. Very exciting. We're gonna push for whatever raises we can get for our employees. So, that's it. That concludes my notes.
Thank you, Ms. West. Mr. Chong?
Good evening. My name is Frank Chong. I'm the father to Anna Chong. She's a... She plays a... She attends very high school. She's a first-year student there, and she's a... She plays the flute for the Vera High School marching band. I'm here tonight because I wanted to bring up a concern and a disappointment resulting from a decision that was made by Brevard Public Schools that resulted in a denial of an opportunity for excellence for both her and for another student here in Brevard County. And that is, at the beginning of the year, her band director had recommended to her that she apply for a number of enrichment activities, which includes Allstate, which, Ms. Campbell, you had acknowledged earlier, Brevard County, and for various different enrichment efforts by the Florida Flute Association. In good faith, she applied to all three, and we were blessed to have found out that she was selected to participate in all three events. So, we just came back from Allstate, and that was a really wonderful and blessed event. I'll say, for the other two, when I learned about her selection for those two items, I had flagged and said, "Oh, there's a little bit of a conflict. They were scheduled for the same weekend. There's a slight conflict where, well, I would need to move her from one location to the other, from Melbourne up to Orlando." And she'd probably need to miss maybe by about two hours, just because of the time it takes to transit from one location to the next. That was raised up to the Brevard Public Schools' attention for both her and for this other student, and the response back was that they needed to make a choice, and the stance was unyielding. I appealed. I went to one of the board members that are here, and she appealed, and they're both flat, all denial, and they were flatly denied by both this one administrator as well as assistant superintendent. And this is despite bringing evidence that the standards that were being held are different than those that are used for Allstate, those that are used for other counties within Florida, and different in one particular instance where accommodation was made within Brevard County. And so, I'm concerned as a parent, because it impacts my daughter's attractiveness for college, for selection, for scholarship. I'm also concerned because, well, she is a ninth grader, and she has another three years, and I have another daughter that's right behind her that's equally talented. And so, just in sum, I do have all of the details here, and quite some detail, which I'll provide, deputy. But I am asking the board, I'm asking Superintendent Mullins, to please re-look at this policy, because I don't want my daughters to, and I don't want this other students who may be in similar situations to be denied opportunities for excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chong. Would any board member like to respond to any of the comments from this evening's public speakers? Ms. Duskovich?
I want to thank BFT and Mr. Savage specifically for bringing that, the whole issue forward. I think it's something very important that we need to look at. I'm not sure of our... How we want to tackle this as a process, but at this point, Dr. Mullins, I know, at least I... There's some avenues here that I want to look at. I'd like some more information, and maybe even Mr. Savage, maybe you and I can chat if you've already gathered some information about other districts. I'm wondering if we are behind the curve on this, or if we're gonna maybe lead the charge if anybody else is interested. So, nobody else is doing it?
I like that.
Anyway, I'm curious. I would really like to explore this. Treating pregnant moms that are our employees the best we can treat them, absolutely is something we want to do. And then, there was one other thing I wanted to address. Oh, I think it was just with the substituting. I absolutely wanted to be there yesterday, and I had signed up and committed, and then had a family commitment that could not be moved. And so, I apologize for not being able to support you all and sub yesterday, because it definitely was on my radar, and I wanted to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Ms. Campbell, absolutely.
Yes. Ms. West, I had a question. During your time, you mentioned, you asked about lowering testing fees for subject areas. If you can just give me an idea, I have a question for you real quick. Are you talking about for the opportunity to become a certified teacher? Okay, thank you.
Since that probably didn't show up on the tape, I'm just going to say that Ms. West indicated yes. She was questioning about the fees to become a certified teacher. Anyone else? Mr. Susan?
I did want to say thank you, because, for Mr. Savage for doing that. There are other options besides the cost also, which is breastfeeding rooms and stuff like that, that we maybe, our administrators might need a refresher on. I know some of our teachers try to breastfeed in certain areas, and they're just in a closet sometimes. You know what I mean? And that's just something that we need to look at. But I do want to say one good thing, is that we are the only school district in the state of Florida right now to promote our breastfeeding station at the new elementary school at Vera High School, or Vera Elementary Schools. We put, although it's FDA, like, I mean, I'm sorry, although it is something that is required by the state for us to have in federal government, we are setting it aside and making it past what is the normal requirement and showing that we are going in that direction. So, any help you need, let me know, but I'm glad that he brought that up.
Ms. Peltz, I have a question, just to Mr. Susan, if I can. I remember seeing the plans originally for that, and it was attached to the restroom, and I specifically stood there and said, "It can't be attached to the restroom," but I have not followed up, unfortunately.
Let's make sure of that.
Are we really? That's stuck? It's good. It's not part of the bathroom.
Like when Sue gives you a thumbs up, it's done.
Yes, she has taken care of it.
You are the best.
And then, Mr. Chong had contacted me after the whole incident had occurred and everything that he was concerned about. I truly believe that there's something that we can do, that we can work out to make sure that those kind of instances... In the past, when I coached football before, we've had multi-level kids getting into different All-Stars, and there's ways to kind of work that out. So, I would like to, maybe in the future, before we come around to it next year, maybe look at that at one of our off-site meetings where we can discuss it as a group.
Ms. Escobar, could you please make a note, so when we circle back for planning on those offsites, and I go, "Pam, what was I supposed to remember?" That would be fabulous. And then, Mr. Calucci, I did want to take an opportunity to respond to you. We've been working with Mr. Gibbs and Ms. Escobar with the transition to our new platform and all of that stuff.
Sorry.
That's okay. Did that spill, or is it just empty?
No, it didn't.
Okay. Going forward, we will actually have the agendas for the offsite, and I just want to clarify, so there's no confusion and expectation. So, if this is not what you're looking for, then you'll need to circle back with me, otherwise I think it's resolved. On our, where you go to all of the agendas for our board meetings, the agenda for the offsite will be listed there with the attachments. We are not, however, you know how we have the sheet that lists all of the board meetings for the year? Those, that is a static, if you... Those are the meetings that we approve in November at our organization of the board. And typically, we do not, we have a statement on there that says workshops will typically be the same day as a board meeting, and offsites will be scheduled as needed. So, we will add the agenda, but we don't, beyond the public notice meeting that we put out for all of our meetings, there's not really another avenue for us to advertise the meetings. So, if you would like to discuss that in more detail, if you feel like there needs to be more, by all means, reach out to me, but we will have the agendas for future offsites posted, along with the agendas in the new platform. Okay? Anyone else need to respond? Okay. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 22 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented. Motion made by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I didn't want to pull this item, but I did just want to recognize in item 17, which is our Head Start annual report, just recognize our Head Start program. I know we talked about them in the last board meeting. They, in the agenda item, it listed that our Head Start program received the 2019 Child Abuse Prevention Task Force of Brevard Social Services Group Award. That's a really long award, but I just want to recognize our Head Start program for that great achievement and recognized by our community for their outreach that they do, and for that Child Abuse Prevention Award. Congratulations to our Head Start team.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. All right, I have a motion by Ms. McDougall, a second by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any additional discussion? Please vote. So, the motion passes 5-0.
I just want to make a comment real quick. The top right corner, while we were voting on that said current item, administrative staff recommendations, I mean, I know what we're voting on, because the next square...
It changed now.
Yeah.
It changed after I voted, though. So, it's just, it's either really stuck somewhere, or something's not right.
Okay. We will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are a total of two action items on this evening's agenda.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? First one is on procurement solicitations, which is G30.
Yeah, you're right, because we are technically voting right now on the consent agenda on this thing.
We already approved the consent.
No, but that's what I'm seeing.
Oh, on your, yeah.
I mean, I know we're verbally...
Got it. I see where you're at.
See, at the top, it says current agenda item.
But then, when you click on the voting piece, it shows the action item.
Right.
It reads what you're actually voting on. It's just, yeah, okay.
It shows on the screen.
Yeah. But it was just, we'll get through it.
Everybody voted? You don't have anything yet?
I voted.
I voted.
Hopefully, there's a way we can speed this up.
There we go.
Yes.
It just popped up.
So, the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
The next is on department and school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Where you're not the information items, which are items that may be brought back later for board consideration, no action will be taken on these items this evening. Dr. Mullins?
There's only one item on this evening's agenda regarding secondary career and technical education materials.
Does anyone want to discuss this item? Does any board member have anything further to report?
Nope.
Really?
You don't need to pontificate on anything.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is now... Oh, wait, is Jake over there with you, Brandon?
He's gonna step out.
Okay. I was just gonna recognize really quickly, you guys probably have seen him the entire time, but Jake, our new canine, has joined us this evening, so we can meet him. So, welcome to the team, Jake, even though you can't hear us, and I will now call this meeting adjourned.